So, are we ready? In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast at a later date over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. This meeting is also being broadcast over Zoom and the Zoom link is in the agenda. The meeting will be broadcast at a later date through the local cable access channel on the public access Facebook page, the link of which is in the agenda, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may be in fact discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So, the next thing we gotta do is stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so in the most anticlimactic way possible, the first thing we are going to do is executive session. So, only school committee members and those participating in the executive session in Maine, and we will be right back as soon as possible.
All our mics are off.
We have concluded the executive session, and we're going to go straight into public comment on prior issues, and this is special. We're talking almost exclusively, I guess, about the budget stuff. I want to note that in the agenda later on, there is also question and answer on the budget, so we're happy to take questions now, but just be mindful that some of them may be answered later. So, if anybody has any public comment on prior issues, you can come forward. Is there anybody on Zoom? All right, the chair's report is next. I have nothing to report. Taylor, student representative, report.
Yes, please pull that up. I'm sorry, my computer freaked out. Just had the tab open. Here we go. Just in general, for Lunenburg Public Schools, the Lunenburg Public Libraries will be hosting a writing contest with four different age groups for everyone to submit to. The deadline is September 25th, and winners will be announced October 3rd. Also, parents should fill out all their back-to-school beginning-of-the-year forms available on the Lunenburg Public Schools website. For the primary school, their open house will be Thursday, September 18th. Check on the school website for different start times for each grade. For Turkey Hill Elementary School, their open house was tonight, September 17th. Upcoming Nature's Classroom for the 5th graders, I believe it's sometime in October. There is a book fair this week for September 15th through the 19th. Penny Wars will start September 29th to October 3rd. And for Lunenburg Middle High School, there will be a display of self-portraits from the middle high school in the Lunenburg Public Library from October 11th to November 9th. Our fall sports and activities are in full swing. Catch a home game for any of our sports by checking the online schedules. 8th graders will go to Washington DC this year. There's an informational meeting Thursday, September 25th at 6:00 PM in our auditorium. And the guidance counselors just recently visited all the senior English classes to offer guidance about their futures and college applications. There's a college fair at Mount Utes Community College on September 25th. And that is all for the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next thing on the agenda is review and approve minutes. This is from a regular session.
I don't see any minutes in there.
Any minutes? No minutes to approve. All right, we'll move it quick.
Great.
Next is approve line item transfers, warrants, and donations. So, Chris, this is your.
So, there's, so there's four transfers to be made, two for FY26 and two for FY25. The first one I'm looking at is from FY26. We move in $4,222.59 out of the curriculum adoption line and putting it into the primary school workbook line, and that's just to adjust the budget for primary school because the account was overspent. The next transfer is for FY26. It's for $550. We're moving $550 from the elementary school art supply line to the elementary phys ed supply line, and that was because the phys ed supply line had a zero balance, and we're doing that so supplies can be purchased for phys ed.
The date on that one is 9/9/26.
That's when I completed the transfer date. Oh, it's 26?
Yeah.
Oh, it's 20, it should be 25.
Yeah, because right above it is FY. That's all. I just wanted to point that out.
Sorry.
I just really want that to come out of this year's budget, not this year's.
So, the next one I'm looking at is from FY25. It's a revision that was made to one of the transfers that was made at the last meeting, and it's due to the fact that the available amount dropped in the line item, so there wasn't enough to cover it. So, the transfer being made is from maintenance of buildings. This being $50,701.43 is being taken out of that account, and it's being put into the sewage disposal, electricity charges, and telephone charges account.
Why are these in red?
So, the original numbers are in black from the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, I just wanted you to know, just because, so you could see the difference.
That's pretty good.
I also very much like that you added the transfers in and out, so we can also see what's been done in the past, transfer-wise. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And the same one for FY25, available amounts dropped, so there's being $206,524
being transferred from transportation down to the elementary special ed paraprofessionals line, to the athletic training coaches, to athletic court timelines.
Does this affect the total?
It doesn't affect the total at the bottom.
Or just move in things now?
We're just moving money, moving money around. It doesn't affect the bottom line.
Dang it.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions on the line item transfers? If there are no questions, then look for a vote on the line item transfers.
Motion to approve the four line item transfers as mentioned above, with the one thing changing being the date from 9/9/26 to 9/9/25.
I'll say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Now I can say that.
Great.
Thank you, Ben. Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
All right.
Warrants.
Warrants are the next thing.
Warrants were $609,112.33. We don't have to vote on those.
No. And then donations.
Donations?
Yes.
Are you used to?
There you go.
And yeah? There we go. Laura Barition, 3D9 Malthus Road, president of the Lunenburg Musicators. As I reported back to the select board a couple of weeks ago, we're very proud of our music kiddos for raising $1,500 through a toll booth this past August, just early August. We would like to donate $500 of that to the Turkey Hill Elementary School supply budget, and then $1,000 to the Lunenburg Middle High School music supply budget that was cut this earlier this spring.
I just want to say that you guys, you guys do amazing stuff.
Thank you.
It's really incredible, and I remember seeing the kids out there. It was, it was a pretty warm day.
It was a warm day. We did that in about three hours, and then we said, okay, things quieted down. The morning was definitely the time to go.
Yep.
Saturday morning, folks were out.
Close office.
Kids were super safe. Everyone was out and everything, and I will tell you, we had one, we just thanked the residents of Lunenburg, everybody that came through. They were just incredible, and I can't tell you how many people said, "My son was in music." My daughter, "You don't know what music did for my kids." Like, it was just, that was great to hear. And we had somebody come and give $200.
Yes.
You know, just on there, just knowing that we were gonna be there, so really, it was really great. It was just, it was good to see how important it is to all the residents, and we're super excited for this Friday for the football game, the kids. We have 18 kids in the band this year, in the marching band.
That's awesome.
That's up from 11 last year, so.
That's what I was saying.
And I heard from Mr. Sheldon last night, there are 36 kids in our 6th grade band. 36. I said, that was just, the numbers are coming back, so we've got to continue to support the music program, because I think it's, the kids are just, they love it, and they work really hard, so.
I've been fortunate enough to see the band rehearsing, and they are a small but powerful group. They are working so hard and doing such a nice job. I can't wait to see them at Friday night's game.
Yeah, they're, I was eavesdropping last night, and they were, they sounded really good, and they've got a good mix of some songs this year, too, so, really good. So, we're super excited, so.
Excellent. So, I do think we have to vote on donation.
Motion to accept the donation from the Lunenburg Musicators with our grateful appreciation.
Second?
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and I will coordinate with someone on how to get that. Yes?
Yeah.
All right, we will get it. All right, thank you.
All right. Looks like the next thing we have is superintendent's report.
So, I have some district highlights and celebrations at Turkey Hill Elementary School. Their OHANA is going to start the year with a focus on multiplication facts. As students demonstrate mastery of the multiplication facts, 1 through 12, their name and surfboard will be added to the trophy case. Congratulations to our early surfers. We cannot wait to see the trophy case filled with surfboards and multiplication masters. Over at the primary school, there is a picture included in the report. It's easy to see our new kindergartners are off to a fantastic start. Their first week was full of exciting firsts, and our incredible K team is right there, guiding them every step of the way as they settle into new routines and expectations. Those smiles say it all. Let's keep them going. The school year is off to a fantastic start at the primary school. The strong beginning wouldn't be possible without the dedication, care, and energy of our amazing staff. Thank you for all that you do. And I was lucky enough to attend their DOT Day celebration, which happened on Monday, and students came together for their very first all-school assembly, which I have to give a shout out to Mrs. Squire was amazingly well-run, and I couldn't believe it was the first time all these students were in a room together. And the purpose of the assembly was to celebrate creativity, courage, and making our own marks. Open House is tomorrow night. For grades 1 and 2, it starts at 5:00 to 5:30, and for preschool and kindergarten, it's 6:00 to 6:45. During the first 15 minutes of each session, join Mrs. Squire and Mr. Smith in the gymnasium for an informative overview of the school year ahead. We can't wait to welcome our families and continue building a strong, joyful community together. And if the attendance is anything like it was at Turkey Hill's open house tonight, we are going to have a big crowd there, which is very exciting to see. Lunenburg Middle School had a very successful open house on September 4th. It was well-attended by parents who enjoyed meeting their students' teachers and learning a little bit about teachers' classrooms. The Lunenburg Middle School student government is in full swing and have started planning the first middle school dance of the year, which is going to be on Friday, October 3rd, with an '80s theme. Lunenburg High School has also had a very successful open house on September 11th, where parents had the opportunity to follow their students' schedules and meet with their teachers. Both the high school and the middle school had a representative from the Office of the District Attorney's Community Outreach Program to provide information to parents about substance abuse, as well as social media concerns. Homecoming is November 1st, and I get to publicly announce the theme. The theme this year is countries. Each grade is in the process of voting on their country, and float building will begin soon. I am so excited for homecoming. The high school school counselors have visited all senior English classes to discuss college and career pathways and review the process and timeline for college applications. The guidance office has a full schedule of college admission representatives visiting the high school, and students in grades 11 and 12 are highly encouraged to sign up. On September 25th, a field trip is scheduled, as our student rep told us, to the college fair, which is very exciting. Our teaching and learning team has been actively engaged in work to support collaboration, instruction, and student learning across the district. The team met with all PLCs in grades K through 5 to establish a shared foundation for learning and collaboration within the multi-tiered systems of support structure, while also sharing resources to strengthen teachers' work in the classroom. Team members visited classrooms throughout the district, getting to know students and observing daily routines in order to better understand the learning environment across grade levels. In addition, the team created a process for gathering feedback from stakeholder groups on the district's core values, ensuring that many voices help shape this important work. The teaching and learning team's activities included time spent supporting the primary school drop-off, which is always an interesting event, but is also always a joyful reminder of the excitement students bring to the school each day. And finally, the team coordinated schedules for assessment screenings in math and literacy, which will take place over the next two weeks with the help of both established and newly-trained teachers, and those are growing very well. From our finance office, the business office has been busy working with the town accountant to set up permissions and units to automate the budget planning process. In particular, the business office now has the capability to generate salary and benefit projections for raises and vacancies, reducing manual entry and improving accuracy. Additionally, we have been reviewing the capital plan and meeting with the facilities director to get a better understanding of the projects that need to be done in the district. And lastly, the business office has been reviewing outstanding purchase orders and balances to close out FY25 fiscal year with the town accountant. Our facilities update. As everyone knows, we had a little bit of a rocky start to the new year with the rooftop fire. With that being said, thanks to our grounds and maintenance team, Norm Cormier and Ryan Ledger, who spotted the smoke and made the proper protocols that helped in the speedy relief of the situation. The roof was repaired within 24 hours, and the damage was minimal. We are looking into some new refrigeration controls for the middle, high, and primary freezers and refrigerators through a grant from Groom Communities. Throughout the summer and recently, we have been diagnosing mechanical issues at the middle high school of the rooftop AC units and are making good headway. Facilities has acquired new filters and belts for the units, and they are being swapped out now. The turf field is in need of some touch-ups. We have paint on order, and we'll be taking care of that in-house, which is a huge cost savings. Primary school has a few classrooms that needed blinds. The team did a little bit of digging and found new blinds in the package from the school's conception, thus saving us a lot of money, and every little bit helps. We will be gearing up for the coming of winter soon, performing preventive maintenance on snow blowers and equipment. The middle high school is in need of a full-time and part-time custodian. They are actually breaking news, in need of two full-time custodians, and they have dropped having two part-time for one full-time experienced custodian to help provide a clean and safe environment for students and staff. Our special services updates. There is an upcoming Pascal Parent Advisory Council supporting all learners, meeting at 6:00 PM on October 2nd. It's the support group. The topic is trunk or treat, and it's going to be in-person only in this room, the middle school project room. The special services department is currently navigating the new DESI timelines, which has presented some challenges as we work to schedule required meetings without a team chair in place at the primary and Turkey Hill schools. Our team is working diligently to navigate these challenges while trying to maintain compliance and prioritizing student needs. I want to thank Mrs. Hansdahl for her work in chairing teams in addition to all of the other duties she performs. We have filled our occupational therapist vacancy, and our new hire can begin by the end of the month, but she's actually starting October 2nd, so the beginning of next month. And we have hired Kat Barry Grove. Thank you. Kat Barry Grove as our new occupational therapist, and we want to give a special shout-out and heartfelt thanks to Maggie for her 17-plus years of dedicated service to Lunenburg students and families. Her impact has been significant, and she will be greatly missed. For community engagement and communication, I had a great time this week chairing on our boys soccer team against Hudson, which many of you know is my hometown, and it was really fun to be chairing for Lunenburg. And our girls' field hockey team against Shepherd Hill, which was the high school I graduated from, so that was really fun to watch, too. The energy, teamwork, and school spirit at both games were incredible to see. Moments like these remind me how special it is to be part of this community, and they were the perfect way to end my day. Thank you.
I just want to follow up. I just came from the Turkey Hill open house, and we did the high school open house last year, or last week. Both were relatively well-attended, and I wanted to comment that all of the teachers seemed really enthused, that even like, every teacher that had been there had been there for a while, and then some of them were newer, and all seemed really excited. I also wanted to give a special thank you to Mrs. Smith, who has agreed to be the sophomore float person, one of the two sophomore float people.
Excellent.
And I want to thank all the families that do the floats, because they just basically lose their garage for a month.
I'm so excited.
Everybody gets excited. It's crazy. All right, let's see. Hold on.
Can I ask a question? Is the girls' field hockey team, they're undefeated right now?
Yes. They had their third shutout in a row, the game that I saw. At least, that's what students around me were saying.
Pretty good. Sorry, I was responding.
New Business Arts and Cultural Vitality Grant.
So, in your folders, you'll see a memo from Deb Bookis regarding the Arts Vitality Cultural Grant. This is the third year of a three-year grant. It'll give us approximately $7,000, and there is also an action plan with how that will be spent in your folder, but it's basically to enrich our arts experiences for our students. I recommend that we accept Mrs. Bookis, Dr. Bookis, excuse me, applying for this grant.
Anybody want to ask questions? Do I have a?
Actually, I have a question. It talked about substituting, allowing students to substitute 9th grade gym for an art class. Are they required?
Gym, physical education is a required class, so that is a portion of the plan that I don't see us being able to enact.
Okay, that's like step one of tier one. Who, okay.
The art department worked on this plan with Dr. Bookis.
Okay. Because I do, I like the idea, especially with the study halls, but replacing phys ed when it's a state curriculum requirement, I was just very confused about that. Do we have to, it just probably won't happen.
It won't happen.
Okay.
The study halls are like the cushion for the schedule, but boy, we can get rid of study halls.
It would be great if we, if art classes could be the cushions.
Yes.
Because I've been saying that for a while, art, we could offer art classes as well to be the cushions.
We would need more art teachers to do that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, do we want to take a vote on that one?
Yep. Motion to accept applying for the Lunenburg ACB action, or the grant.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of newly or representation.
So, I'm asking the committee tonight, there's a letter of, let me make sure, committee engagement in your folders. This is a law firm that I have worked with in three districts, Brookline, Boston, and Hudson. I am very confident in their legal representation, and their response time is amazing. I would, and their availability is also amazing. I can call and text on weekends and get an immediate response from the lawyer that I'm working with. Each of the lawyers at the firm I've worked with at one time or another, they're all outstanding. Their fee is only $25 more an hour than what we're currently paying our legal representation, and I'm asking for the committee's consideration in engaging with the new law firm.
So, if I could just follow up. One of the things that I think institutions need to do is they need to make sure that they're always examining their legal services. Unlike a lot of costs, these are things that we can reset regularly without sort of any sort of statutory or regulatory oversight. Lawyers are always at-well employees, and I think that the way that we maximize our value in terms of spending the least for getting the most is being willing to move around as the needs dictate. I will say that the response times have not been great, and that has been a problem that we've had for the last two sets of lawyers. I took a look at the firm's website. I took a look at each of the lawyers that was there. I can tell you that the rate that they're charging is quite reasonable. The market rate for legal services is probably a little bit higher than that. The rate that they're charging on an hourly basis for their paralegals, it's a little higher, like if it's closer to the average for market rate, that, that one seems a little higher than the attorney. Obviously, it's not more money in terms of real dollars, but in terms of being closer to the average, it's a little higher, and it seems like they have the kind of experience that we need. I would probably ask for them to modify the engagement letter to make sure that we retain control over negotiations with our unions. I think that it's really important for a school committee, especially in a town this small, to be the face of the decision-making when it comes to the collective bargaining agreements. It's got to be you and one of us, and so if they're willing to be, you know, consultants, then I think that would be even better. The other thing is, that will save us a ton of money, because those negotiations are so long, so, so long. So, as, as a lawyer and without providing legal advice, just law experience, I, I think that this is a move that we should take. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Fortner?
I like that they bill in tenths. Is tenths of an hour increments?
It's always, it's always tenths of an hour. Six minutes.
Yep. You guys? All right. Motion to engage the law firm of Valerio, Dominello, and Hillman LLC with the.
One amendment.
One amendment that's outlined by Anthony.
For the second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's go. The next thing on the agenda, Aya, is increase in office support for LMHS. I think we talked about this a little bit last time. If you could just catch us up to speed where we are.
So, one of the decisions that was cut last year, when we had to make the difficult choices that had to be made, was the secretarial support in the main office here. So, currently, we have two wonderful ladies working, but the only administrative assistant is Tina. She does all of the attendance for the high school, which. She does all of the attendance for the high school, which is much more complicated than it is at the elementary level because it has to be taken every period and reported every period. And making the phone calls and the contacts, plus all the purchasing and all the other things that our incredible admin assistants are doing, she has found to be untenable this year. So I checked with Chris if we had enough money and salary to increase Courtney Fuller by fifteen hours a week to help with this position.
How much is this going to cost and where is the money coming from?
So the money will be coming. So the money will either be coming from the secretarial line or the salary reserve. And I believe her hourly rate is twenty-four sixty an hour.
Fifteen times.
I don't know what it locked down my head.
Courtney's unhealed status?
I believe Mr. Santri has spoken to her.
Okay, that's great. She's fantastic. She holds a lot of things together. Come out of the salary reserve. Alright, if you say we can.
Goodbye, me.
You have any questions?
No, sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I think it was not a great idea for us to cut staff there, especially if we're looking at cellphone changes and the cellphone rules coming down. I don't know, they're already doing so much and. Okay, and is, is, was fifteen hours a week below us or was it?
No, it was exactly what Mr. Santri wanted.
Okay.
He felt that it would be sufficient.
Motion to approve adding fifteen additional secretarial work hours as outlined in the memo from Mr. Santri.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
The FY twenty-seven draft capital plan, I think this is one of our two co-main events tonight.
I think, Peter, you want to, if you do have questions or?
I haven't seen it.
Did you mail it back out?
I didn't get it. I.
I shared it with them.
Yeah, that's what I emailed you about.
Oh, you know what, Mr. Beardmore, I emailed it to your Lunenburg address.
Yeah.
Even the mom walk goes, did you?
Apologies, I haven't been as diligent in checking my town email.
Yeah, why would, I mean. How does this differ from last year's? I didn't compare it side by side. What's different?
So for last year's, it was twenty-six, year FY twenty-six, thirty-five, and we pushed it off to twenty-seven.
Okay. So this is, is this the same as last year's that we were trying to get done?
It's the same items, some of them are in different order.
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate the inclusion of the photos. Who put this together?
The two Chris's, Chris Stevens and Chris McThebar, but Chris Stevens is responsible for the photos.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, I just wanted to know who to thank. I enjoy when things are this comprehensive.
These are all, except where you don't have the numbers, they're all real estimates that Mr. Stevens thought out. Currently, they're the best estimates that we have without having some additional studies and walkthroughs done.
So can I just ask a question? Would it be possible for Chris to talk to George? George and I did a walkthrough of the turf field and the site survey and the drainage improvement stuff right before we came. There's a lot of stuff in here that I think is a good starting point and I think that George's professional experience outweighs all of us in this area. So it would be helpful to have those two talk together because I think that, and George, you can jump in if you want, but George's approach to the turf field, site survey, and drainage improvements would break it up in a slightly different way and he thinks we might be able to realize some major cost savings because of, not only the supplies that would be used and could be reused, but by doing it in a different order than what's proposed, we could do one thing without stepping on the toes of the other thing and if we do it in the right order, not only will it save money, but it could go faster. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
That is certainly possible when Mr. Stevens gets back from vacation. I'd love to have George meet with.
Yeah, I'd like to see what context of the, of the original bidding was. Sometimes people see things that aren't foreseen. But certainly, there's a lot of opportunity here to reuse those bin lock, save some fencing.
Oh, I learned.
You know, it is not a lot of, yeah, the retaining wall's got to go because it's got, it's all cemented together with the fence and stuff, but it's not a big wall. And so looking at some of the original quotes, I, I just feel like if we can break that out, we can certainly potentially save some money and essentially just be, we don't need a general contractor. We hired contractors to do specific work.
So may I offer some?
Sure.
So first of all, I, I think that you need to look at this through the lens of how we are going to pay for it and the likelihood that it's going to be approved in its current form. We have, just with respect to the track and field project, which I fully agree, needs to be prioritized. This plan splits it across FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-nine to the tune of about two and a half million dollars. We are, it is very unlikely that we are going to use normal raise and appropriate and unused capital funds to fund a nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar project, let alone a one-point-five-million-dollar project. This is going to be regular borrowing. And this regular borrowing is going to have to be serviced.
Can I time out here real quick?
Yeah.
Madam Town Manager? If you want, if you ever want to say anything, I'm happy to have you go. You're just shaking your head.
I'm not, no, I'm back here.
Okay, okay. I'm watching you because she's right.
She snuck in on me.
She's giving you the yes, though.
I am giving you the yes.
She's done all days so far, Peter.
Good. This is something that is going to require, at a minimum, the support of the capital planning committee, the support of the town manager, and the support of town meeting specifically because we are going to have to borrow money to do this. Secondly, FY twenty-nine is in three years. I would encourage you all, the next night that it rains, there's probably a programmed event out there, go. And watch what happens on that field. It is not safe when there's a heavy rain out there. It is not draining properly and it is a serious safety concern, let alone the fact that we are now at eight years and it hasn't been draining right for eight years. It is past its lifespan right now. And we are projecting three years from now to fund this project. I, I don't think that the timeline is the right approach here. I think we should package this together. Now, I understand the fact that we have to do the work in some order and I am not an expert on this. I don't want to claim to be, but we should package this together.
I don't disagree with that, but it can be packaged, but done out with different contractors performing different duties.
I understand that. Now, the other thing, though, is that we have to do this within the confines of mass, mass state law. It needs to be bid appropriately.
That I don't know anything about.
And that is not, that is not an easy thing to do. So with respect to not GCing this, I, I think we may be biting off more than we can chew. The, the third thought here is that when you go and you borrow money over, say, a ten-year span of two and a half million dollars, that is some serious debt service, which is either going to have to come out of the town budget or the school budget, but that's money, that's real money to the tune of, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? I, I think we need to look to offset that with some sort of revenue source. And I think we should propose a project simultaneous to that that can potentially bring revenue in the form of a solar project. Go to Fitchburg. Just drive up to the school. As you're approaching the school, look right and there's a parking lot right there and there's a solar canopy over it and that is generating revenue for the Fitchburg schools. And this is happening all over the state. I go to a lot of different schools, go to a lot of different games, and this is happening all over the place. And it was an ask of the previous administration and they did not bring forth a good proposal for us. But I think that we could do that, we could seriously come up with a plan for an additional cellphone tower. I know we've been approached for an additional cellphone tower. But I think if we came to town meeting and said, we need to borrow two and a half million dollars to deal with this albatross, but we're going to bring with it an opportunity to offset that debt service at the same time, I think that that would be a much more palatable project. So anyway, that's, those are the.
Can I ask the person over your shoulder?
I mean, I think that it's.
You keep shaking your head, so like.
I'm just an expressive human.
We're going to ask you these questions anyway.
I was really just here to listen. You know, what have you got me into? No, I think that, I think that this is really a first reaction to, I think I've heard some kind of conversations about solar arrays as revenue streams, particularly from Mr. Jeffries, who's a big proponent. But I think if it's feasible for the project and it would generate long-term revenue and sustainability, you're going to have ongoing operation, operational costs at this facility. It makes sense to explore a revenue stream.
What do you think about it in terms of the politics? Do you think it will make it easier to get past a town meeting?
Oh, I think anytime that you have a way to offset, it's going to be, if there's a direct correlation that this revenue stream is, so I think that's, so that's, it depends. Where is that revenue stream going? Is it going into a fund that's dedicated to paying down the debt? Or is it going into a fund that is discretionary? If it's going into a fund that's dedicated to paying off the debt, I think that's a pretty easy sell to most voters.
When did the debt roll off the curve?
It hasn't.
Oh, okay, when does it?
I believe it's two years from now.
Okay, so around that.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty. Are we definitely doing a turf field? Well, I want your opinion on it.
He might know.
I know he doesn't know what we're doing.
George might know.
Because I've seen some schools.
The turf, turf needs to be replaced.
So the turf absolutely needs to be replaced. So they, I think what Mrs. Zowski is alluding to is, and, and a lot of people have discussed, okay, turf is expensive and it is, you've just seen a quote. What, what would be the possibility of replacing this with a grass field? And, and I think that that is a, a fair question and a fair discussion to be had. That has also happened in places around the state where the realization that this can be cost prohibitive. Here's the problem that we have in Lunenburg. We have a lack of field space right now. If you go up to the grass fields that, you know, folks were practicing on and, and playing games on, as I was approaching tonight, I actually drove around the property this morning, took some pictures out there. There are already, and it's September seventeenth, eighteenth, there are already substantial divots on that grass field that are not going to go away this season and probably not for the spring season and we will, like we do every summer, spend forty-five thousand dollars to try to treat those fields to bring them back and they just deteriorate quickly.
The upkeep of turf is very expensive.
I'm sorry?
Upkeep of natural turf is.
And that's exactly the point that I'm trying to make, is that it's very expensive and the amount of use that we put onto these fields is extraordinary. We have four fields and they are pretty much programmed every afternoon and evening, the ones that are lit, throughout the fall and spring sports seasons. So if we put grass over here, we are absolutely, and those are where the games are played for the most part, the varsity games. We're, we're risking that we won't be able to program that field in the event that we have two solid weeks of rain and, you know, you just get a mud bowl or that kind of thing. Those are the things that we would experience if we.
How old is the turf out on the field now?
The grass?
Out of fish turf.
Eight years. It is, it's eight years. We, well, yeah, the first season of that turf was twenty-eighteen, I believe.
Was it grass before?
No, no, that's the second run of turf.
What's the lifespan?
Yeah, now, there's a history here that I don't want to, that I want to go too deep in, but, but it was, it was not a good project.
That's, that's, that's your cure to.
So selecting a proper turf that's built for athletics, that's one thing, that turf costs a little more money, but it is more durable and lasts longer.
It's, we need, we need a turf installation that is built for the drainage system that is under the turf and we have a mismatch right now.
We need a, we need a drainage system built under the turf.
No, it's there. It's a hundred percent there.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not engineered properly because if it was, it would be handling the water flows.
I'd be happy to have a discussion with you offline in detail. As I said, there's a very long history here.
Yeah.
And, and the current turf and padding under that turf is not congruent with the drainage system that is underneath it.
Okay, so it's probably not going to be able as well.
That is the problem.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
When we do the turf, how long would we be without that field?
That is a question that I do not know what the answer is to.
The lawn, the lawn, the raw fabric was used for padding under the.
Correct.
It should have been, yeah.
We, George and I talked about this when we were walking up here from Turkey Hill. How long do you think it would take?
The field?
To replace, how many seasons are we going to be without that field?
No, I, I, well, I honestly think the field, it depends on how the drainage was done. If it, the drainage, all the drainage needs to replace, like, you know, like say there's four-inch pipe and they got to go to a six-inch pipe or eighteen-inch culvert pipe or whatever it might be, that's going to lengthen the time. So it's kind of hard not knowing what's under there to say that. But I honestly think that because there's a base already made, as long as that base is good, like it's crushed down and the proper, replacing the turf and, and that drainage should be maybe five to six weeks and then, then you talk about another two to three weeks of installing turf.
That's a summer.
Yeah, and I, I honestly think that once we get turf and padding, we're in pretty good shape.
Plus, the other thing is it's got to be caution use because we don't want to tear up the track.
Right.
So there's going to be some extra cost.
The track is on the.
So this is on the list and the track does need resurfacing and we should do that at the same time.
Didn't look terrible, though. It's probably.
Walk it. It needs work.
But it is going to get, it is going to get banged up.
Sure is.
The retaining walls and stuff, that's a much quicker project. That's just a few weeks.
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't know. I, I can tell you that, and I'm sure you've been out there.
Today?
There's going to come a point where we're going to have to turn that thing off because of those retaining walls.
Yes.
And it's the.
Turn the field off.
Yeah, turn the whole thing off.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not just the retaining wall above the track, it's the cement, what you refer to as.
Yeah, the bin blocks.
The bin blocks, like, that's going to be dangerous with respect to the press box and all that stuff, like it's. It's in bad shape.
And that's another aspect to the, which I kind of overlooked today, was that that whole press box has to be removed too in order to do that project. So that's a little bit of a.
But you think we can reuse the bin blocks?
Oh, I definitely do. There's maybe you got to replace a couple. If you want to get picky about the ends being finished ends and the top being finished tops, then you, yeah, we just, we can replace those, but those bin blocks are not that expensive anyways.
So if we do borrowing, like not a debt exclusion borrowing, but. like not a debt exclusion borrowing, but against what's our regular...
A regular borrowing.
Our regular borrowing, does that need to go to town meeting?
Yep, yep. It would be voted on as part of the budget.
Okay. And that's what happened with the last time we did this?
Yes.
Okay.
So let me make sure I'm summarizing correctly. Peter's proposal is to bundle these things together for purposes of financing and funding. And George, your proposal is to split them up in terms of construction and implementation.
We can still bundle the costs, but we can use different contractors within that specialize in retaining walls and that specializes in field turf installation with proper drainage techniques. So we can, we could bind those, but, but the cost of the project is there. I, I just, I know those laws and regulations, but it would be a pretty easy fight to say it's gonna cost an extra million dollars if we follow that, this law that's in this book. You know, why can't we do it this way? You know what I mean? Like, it just...
No, and I, I think that that is a conversation that needs to be had with, you know...
With many things.
With the town, no, but with the town manager and with the town finance director and with our finance director and with our facilities director to figure out how we orchestrate this.
Absolutely.
Well beyond my span of knowledge.
Yeah, absolutely, and there may be, there are some single contractors out there that, that can do everything. And I doubt that they would be the price that we're looking at in this, this...
This, we'd also have to talk to Chris Stevens, because this adds to his workload if we make him the general contractor for this project. There's a reason.
Yeah.
So that would, I don't wanna just volunteer our school employees to suddenly become...
No, I think if you, we use the right contractor. You have, they're, they're well in the scope of what goes on out there. You know, a site contractor, somebody who understands the project, that... I, I just feel like I know this price is really high, right? I mean, I, you wanna look at those retain wall stuff, it's, it's blown right out. It's, it's insane what the price is. The turf field, given the price of turf and the work that's gonna have to go into it and removing the old turf, it seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking...
Because the numbers you talked to me about as we were walking in were almost exactly what the cost is. It's just the hillside hardscape drainage, that's the one that you think is high, correct?
Yeah, it's the, it's the retaining walls specifically, I think, is extremely high.
This would still, if we're doing regular borrowing, this still is a, I mean, I know it's a capital project because it falls under you guys, so we have to work with you.
Yeah, the way the, the way the charter and the bylaws are written, we actually had a conversation a couple of weeks ago about, like, whether a building project, like a renovation of Tur, of Turkey Hill, would or would not be in scope of capital planning. And I'm in the minority on this. I say no. The rest of the committee says yes, absolutely. So the, it, it is very, this kind of project, though, I agree, is very much in scope of capital planning. And, and what is different here is because of the amount, the funding mechanism is different from anything we've done in the last ten years.
You think that debt exclusions should not be counted? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Well, particularly when you're involving, like, MSBA and the requirement of a building committee and all that jazz. It's just a different process and procedure to get there. Whereas this is very typical for a normal capital plan type project. It's just the financing will be different.
I, I assume the answer's no, but I wanna ask, are their grants... My brain was trying to figure out what that was. Oh.
Riding buffers around.
Design of a sample.
He looks so cool doing that.
You're gonna ask about grants?
Yeah, so grants and state assistance or loan help from the state, are you...
Nothing that I'm aware of. You may have noticed a yard sign as you were walking into the building earlier today. T-Mobile does an annual program where they have a contest, and they, they actually fund a project just like this for one high school. So, you know, go out and snap the UBC or whatever it is, the barcode, and, and vote.
Can we share that?
Yes, and we can be wild fans at our football games, because that's how you win. Last year, we won five thousand. Well, very excited and enthusiastic fans.
I don't know the details of the program, but it, it's a great, it's a great program that T-Mobile does. But I, you know, I mean, that's, I think they fund one in the country.
They do. We should probably not count on that in our financial planning. Okay, so this is FY27 and FY29. What are you recommending? I know, I'm asking you because you were on school committee, and this was your baby.
Yeah, I think it should be collapsed into FY27. I'm not saying that you should move anything else out of FY27, but I think that this should be voted on as part of the FY27 capital plan and managed as a single project in that plan.
And this will fit into regular borrowing or...
Yeah, we have capacity.
Okay.
And you're, you're proposing that we would own outright, not lease or rent the, the solar?
That's something that I actually had not... Oh, the, the solar, I think, is a whole other project that...
But if we bundle it together...
So, so let me, let me be more specific. I think there are paths for solar that the school committee could engage in that require no money down, would drive revenue, and not even involve a capital planning project, because it would just be a policy decision rather than a capital plan, a funding request. I think it needs a more thorough analysis to what has been done at this point, and I couldn't really, I, I would make a recommendation at this point based on the information that we have available.
So when we did this at the budget task force, the solar panel installation at Fitchburg was a hot topic. Everybody thought that was amazing, and we had some idea of how much revenue it generated, and it was more than I think people had anticipated. And if we're going to install it and we put it, like, over that parking lot, right where the snack shack is, and then that's part of the construction plan, it might, like you said, tie together a continuously renewing revenue source with the borrowing that we do. And as long as we do what the town manager had recommended, where it would be specifically delegated to the debt, that might, that might help. You know, it might be the spoonful of sugar that helps the medicine.
I agree. I don't think it's gonna cover all of it.
No.
But, you know, it might cover some of it. And I think that that's, I think that that would be a display of goodwill that would probably be welcome.
We should follow up on the cellphone tower.
Yeah, because there is another...
There was another proposal.
I'm not sure what, yeah, I'm not sure where we are on that, but there had been a proposal.
I will research that and get back to you.
Are there any grants available for something like solar?
I don't know.
Installing solar?
Probably.
The Green Committee will have a better idea of that.
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Because that would even offset more of us.
Yeah, and by the way, so I don't, I, I think we need to treat this. I've presented to you as one thing. Ultimately, that portion is gonna have to be split out, right? But I think that it's part of the logic of a proposal, if not encompassed in the same article at town meeting. I don't think that that goes that way, right? So I think that what I would recommend to the school committee is you determine that this is a goal to figure out by town meeting and then present this as a, this is our intent at town meeting, right? It doesn't necessarily have to be actionable at town meeting, but it would have to be a credible program that, that the school committee presents as part of our intent.
We have to do this, we would have to have this all ready for town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I personally think that the idea of doing it all together makes a lot more sense to me than doing it piecemeal. I don't know if there's the political appetite for it, but I also think it's worth trying.
I definitely would not do the project piecemeal, because you're gonna have to...
Yeah, I, I mean...
But we can break, but we can look at breaking up in different contractors.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the hardscape and the track and turf replacement, if we're gonna, yeah. Plus, if we're just gonna turn that into a construction zone, I mean, that, that field is...
Well, that's kind of my thinking as well.
That field is heavily utilized.
If we could swallow the elephant with one gulp, I think we should do it.
Oh, I definitely, I definitely agree with that. I wouldn't do it any other way.
The other thought here, just for what it's worth, is in these kinds of projects with municipal borrowing, it's not like you go out and you borrow two and a half million dollars and you, you know, like, you, you, there's, there's a whole process here whereby you basically do temporary borrowing as you're doing it, and then you do a, a, a full bond at the end for whatever you've actually spent. So, so there's a process here that we would have to go through, right? And, and I think that doing it as one thing, as opposed to we, we do it as two things, but you, you start the first one and you don't know for sure you're gonna do the second one, is problematic.
Agreed.
How often is that track open to the public?
Whenever it's not being programmed by the schools.
No, that's, I just wanna note that, like, this is not just a school thing.
I was out there at seven AM this morning, and there were folks walking around the track.
Okay. I just, I wanna point out that it's, it's a community thing as well. It's not just a school ask.
When it's super snowy and my wife and I can't do our normal evening walk, we'll drag down and we'll walk that in the snow at like ten o'clock.
Do we plow it?
No.
The track?
It melts earlier, and even if it doesn't, it's still grippier underneath.
There, there have been a few circumstances in the past where we're trying to get track practice to happen, you know, for spring track, and we've had a late snowstorm and we've snowblowed out there, but for the most part, we just let it go.
I remember one game in Doyle Field where they had a spring shovel to shovel off the field before the cross went. Okay, so that kind of changes... Do you have an opinion, Chris, on...
I guess...
I'm not, you don't have to have that. You can say no.
I'll say I'm not an expert on procurement. I'm just looking at it from a numbers perspective. I guess if I got a rough estimate of what the total project would cost, I would know better. So, yeah.
Who is our procurement officer in the school now?
We currently don't have one.
It's the superintendent, unless you delegate somebody else as the superintendent.
Oh. But I don't have the MCPo certification.
Oh.
So how do we...
You send me to classes.
Okay. Are, do we use our one... Do we send you to classes or do we send Chris or do we...
I can do it too.
Time to go class.
We get one a year, right? Don't mess with the town manager. Sorry. We get...
You're talking about the free high program?
The procurement officer, yeah.
Yeah, so the, I, I think that the sign up for this year is already come gone, I believe, but I can check. Yeah, the, it, there's a program through the inspector general whereby they offer one person per year at the time being. I think it's the second year or third year that they've been doing this to get fully certified, which is a savings of, nah, maybe about fifteen hundred dollars for the community. It's not instantaneous. It is, I wanna say maybe six to nine days of time over the course of period. But it would take somebody to get fully certified, it would take them several months to go through the program fully, just because of the timing. But, I mean, I think everybody should be certified. The classes are great. But you can do things although you don't have a certification. It doesn't...
Who's the town's procurement officer?
I am the procurement officer, and I do not have my MCPo. I don't fully have it.
Who's trained?
Julie has her MCPo.
Some projects require the certification or...
I do not think that there is any bright line rule requiring MCPo certification.
Okay, I thought there was.
I don't believe there is.
Okay.
So just more of a recommendation?
Strong recommendation, yeah.
Okay, so it's not a...
Yeah, basically, if I, from what I know, it's three classes that you have to take.
It's three classes, don't worry.
Yeah, because I've taken one of them.
You took the first one.
Yes.
Yeah, so they get better.
Yes.
But, yeah, they, so I, I actually, I had always been of the understanding that somebody from every community needed to be certified. And I called the inspector general directly on that a couple of years ago, and they said, "No, that's not the case."
Okay.
So I felt, and suspenders call again, this is, you know, but that's what I heard, what I called that one time.
So could I just ask what your intentions are, Mr. Chair, with respect to, you know, there's a recommendation in here. I've addressed, obviously, one project in terms of bringing it in to 27. Are you planning to have the school committee prioritize the 20, the FY27 items?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the, this is the way I overthink of it, based on what you had said last time. Instead of prioritizing the items, we should say, "Is there any objection to the previously set prioritization that we had before we had to redo it due to the green budget? And if there is, then we can go in and deal with it one at a time, instead of redoing all the work we did before, because we had already done the prioritization in the past, and the facts haven't changed, because we had to scrap what we did to qualify for the grant."
Yeah, the only, I mean, the only, the only issue is, is that the track and field was not an FY26 project. So now that that is part of the mix, it, it needs to be brought into that discussion.
So if we wanna do...
That means taking something off to put that in.
Yeah, we wanna just, we could do it that way.
You could stick it to the tops, stick it to the bottoms, stick it in the middle.
I think, I think we talk about, let's first look at the priority ranking.
Yeah, so the slide forty-three is the priority ranking that we had coming in to last year. We had to change it in order to prioritize an item that qualified for a grant. We did that change at the recommendation of the town manager, and we got a substantial amount of essentially free money. So this was what we were going to do before that grant requirement stipulated we change the order of events. Now that we've had Peter's presentation about the turf field, maybe what we could do is say, first, setting aside the turf field, do we like this order? And then, second, if we like this order, where would we put the turf field? And if, if we just go down the line, I think that's probably the fastest way to do it.
Can I, can we talk about the generator? I was curious if that was a priority of our new superintendent.
Sure.
It is not at this time a high priority for me.
Okay. And if you recall, the cost for that escalated wildly from something that was doable
To something that is not.
To something that made no financial sense.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I don't think, I, I would like, personally, I would advocate that we just remove the generator.
Put solar panels on anymore.
Put solar panels on the generator?
As a clarification. So we're looking at slide forty-three.
Yeah.
All those things on there, some of them have been done? Yes or no?
No.
Okay.
No.
None of them have been done.
Nor have they been.
Those are on the list to get done.
If we take off the generator and four and put the turf field in, does that provide clarity to the capital planning committee, Peter?
Any scenario that you do here is gonna provide some level of clarity, but the ask is, is that they be presented in a priority order.
Yeah.
You know, the capital planning committee does what it does, but...
Yes.
My, my personal view on this is that, and given the history, things like safety film being what it is. Didn't we get one of those?
Yes, we did.
Turkey Hill got safety film.
No, but wasn't there another one that kinda came out of it, as a Bluebird funding?
Yes.
Did we?
Yes.
Which, okay.
Is it the primary school?
So isn't that on...
Sanibel School High School.
Was that a grant?
So it's on, it's still on there, though?
Yeah.
It says safety film. That's a mask in.
Oh.
I think it's a multi, multi-stage.
So I think we need to go back and just get some clarification on that one.
Okay.
Do you, if you remember, you can look until the safety film.
Yeah, I, I think we should get some clarification on the safety film. Uh, yeah, I, I think we should get some clarification on the safety films.
Yeah.
Um.
But I know that one school has none.
Yeah.
And it's the school that has a glass vest view.
Yeah. But we did, we did fund that one, I believe.
Okay.
But we, I gotta, we just, please go back and get clarification, I just don't know.
Here's the other thing we gotta remember. This is sort of like, we're the kid on Santa's lap.
Right.
We are making a request of Santa, who then figures out what happens next. But we are not the ultimate decision maker, nor is capital plan.
Right.
So, like, we can spend a lot of time, like, moving things from three to four, and it's not gonna make a difference.
We could ask for a pony, but we're not getting a live horse.
Correct, that's right.
Santa's not ring live.
Again, this is just Pete Beardmore talking, and you can take it for what it's worth. Safety film has not played well.
Never.
With the capital planning committee. Um, I, I think we gotta get some clarification on what we've gotten paid for and where we're at on that. My view on this is that the hot water tank is a risk, but it is not a safety risk.
Yeah.
If the hot water tank goes and we don't have hot water at the school, can we still have school? Like, so it's not a safety risk, but it is the daily operations of the school, and it would not be fast to replace.
And what's the cost on that one? That was a twenty thousand dollar deal.
I think the only two that I hear in my mind that, aside from the, the safety film, that are safety issues and operational issues are the driveway at LPS and the playground.
I totally agree with you.
They have got to be done.
Yeah, I, in my mind, I was thinking I would put track and field number three, but we're talking about a twenty thousand dollar project in the, in the water tank.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, put it number three, put the other thing four. I mean, in my mind, the track and field has to be dealt with, so.
But this capital, like, if we put on a high priority cheap project, is that more likely to get funded? Okay.
I know, every year I ask him that, and I'm like.
That's a good answer. I, I'm really hoping that, that town manager's poker face comes up. I was, I was asking two people.
I mean, the good news is, is that the capital planning committee is actually kind of predictable because it's been pretty stable over the last several years. You, you kinda know what you get, right?
Or what you don't get.
Or what you don't get.
Um, so, I, I think that what we should do is I think that we should take out the generator and put in the turf field, and then send that list as it is on slide forty-three with that one change.
But by October first is when you wanted, you guys wanted.
Well, that was the ask, I mean, you guys have, you guys have another meeting. This was listed on your, by the way, this was listed on your agenda for discussion, I don't know that this is an action item, so.
It's on our next agenda, too.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, sounds good.
And you're okay if we?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think that there's, there's, there's space here to make this right.
Everybody do some research and be prepared to take a three-minute vote.
Okay, 'cause this was another three-minute conversation.
Yes, yeah, 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 all right.
Thank you for the three, your three minutes.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Madam Town Manager, that was super helpful. All right.
I love how she shows up when we have questions sometimes, she's sort of magically there, it's very convenient.
Ultimately, we're asking for the pony from her.
No, from town meeting.
Ah, okay.
No, 'cause town meeting can't make changes to capital plan, they can only say yes or no, as we learned. But as we learned at town meeting, you cannot just pick and choose.
All right, superintendent goals and drafts is our next thing. I, I wanna make sure that we do this. We are fifteen minutes over ninety minutes. If we wanna get to the community Q and A that we have people here for, I, I'm curious if there would be a will to put this off until later, and then go twenty-five budget update, and then the twenty-five community, uh, Q and A, 'cause I know that we have at least one person here who wants to ask questions.
That would be fine, sweetie.
Are we okay with that?
Motion to pass over the superintendent goals and save that for next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go to the twenty-five, uh, budget update, and I believe that's Chris, your show.
So, after running the numbers this morning, um, the surplus sits at six hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
It went up.
It went up, but.
What was the exact number again?
Six hundred and three dollars, or six hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Is there, uh, what would your confidence interval be in saying this is, uh, the last provision of the number?
Pretty confident, I did a whole reconciliation of FY twenty-six, and, um, down to every single employee, I can say with certainty that what we budgeted plus the five hundred thousand free cash, um, will cover, will be just enough for FY twenty-six.
Okay.
If an order was made of something and it came payment on delivery after June thirtieth, is that still from?
FY twenty-five.
That would still be FY twenty-five? Well, that's nice at least. Um, oh my god. Okay, so the folders in budget, the one that I have for FY twenty-six is empty.
We don't have any exhibits.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing.
You are not.
Something. Oh, I mean, there's a, down there.
Is there any, anything else that you think will, uh, there's any way we can decrease that number? I mean, I think we're, we're not really.
The goal is to make things a good cut.
Chris, can you explain how the number increased from what we thought it was?
The five hundred and eighty-two thousand?
Yeah, so, we were working on closing out POs for, um, POs that were opened, um, and that just shot the number up from, I believe it was around five eighty-three at the last meeting to the six oh three.
Why would closing out purchase orders raise the surplus?
Because sometimes we open a purchase order and the invoice doesn't come in for the exact amount, and so there's money remaining on the purchase order.
And that money just didn't get swept back into the budget to be changed?
Because people were being asked here with the budget and responsible, like, we asked them to be because we. Okay. So, I think there's a little bit of confusion. Can you talk about the difference between FY twenty-five?
Yeah.
And the difference between FY twenty-six when we had large, large cuts? Because I think there's a little bit of confusion in the public as far as last year's budget cycle and the need for cuts when we had a surplus.
So, as of now, I would say with the salaries that are projected for the employees that are currently active, we projected out right on the dot that will cover us for FY twenty-six.
The confusion be, or I think it's more of a conflation between FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six is FY twenty-five is actually last school year and the fiscal year ended on June thirtieth. So, this surplus came about in last year's budget when we didn't make as many steep cuts, um, and we were able to actually restore positions with the funding. And so, it, we made the cuts we made this year for this school year appropriately because Chris has forecasted our salaries with the five hundred thousand free cash and that the town generously gave us has forecasted that almost to the penny, that that's what we're going to pay in salary.
So, if we had not had the override in F, in two, that we voted for in two thousand twenty-four, that was for FY twenty-five, we would have had to make significantly more cuts as a result?
I believe so.
About a million more cuts, okay.
So, even though we had a surplus, we used a significant amount of money that we got.
Was there one or two items that were the bulk of the large surplus? 'Cause I know percentages of that surplus is a typical surplus that we were.
Yeah, so.
Carrying because of uncertainty with budgeting.
Yeah, so I think what happened was just being too cautious with the budget, I would say, for last year, maybe a little too cautious, and not spending down enough. I mean, it was about a hundred and thirty thousand salaries that makes up the surplus, and the rest of it was just general expenditures. Um, so, on the salary side, we were actually a lot better than we were on the expenditure side.
What does better mean? Better meaning?
Better meaning, we spent, spent down.
Okay, so we did not make.
So, there's not people that we could have hired, uh, there's not as many people as we could have hired?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
That surplus was not because we didn't, because you cut a position, we did not need to cut, it's because we did not spend.
Yes.
That's, that's, that's actually better to hear.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna leave money on the table, I'd rather be on, like, yellow crayons than NTSS special education reading teacher.
But you, you believe that the FY twenty-six budget is on, on point?
It's on point.
It was not, we're not gonna find an extra half million in there?
Chris is watching it closely. For example, today, he told me we're approximately twenty-five percent spent and can give you the exact number. So, one of the measures that we put in place is this constant forecasting, and the school committee will get monthly reports on that so that it will be public and very transparent, um, what is happening with our budget each month.
When you, no, okay, when you say spent, you mean that includes salaries, not encumbered salaries? That's, we don't consider that spent until it's, the employees have worked the hours.
Correct.
So, we're on track?
Yes.
So, if I could propose that we do this. So, I had questions that were sent to me, and I forwarded them to you.
Yeah.
Let's go through those.
Okay.
And then if those don't answer public, uh, questions from the public, then the public can ask questions.
Yes.
So, uh, if you wanna start, just pick whichever questions you, you got that you felt like you're ready to go on.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, it's in the, it's in the, um, folder, it's in the folder, called budget. It wasn't. And then FY twenty-five, but I'm sorry.
So, do you want me to read the question?
Yeah, sure.
So, the first question is, was there a common pattern explaining why funds went unused? Was there a common pattern explaining why the larger amounts went unused? So, I think the answer to this question was, it really was a perfect storm of transition and staff turnover at the most inopportune time that caused this. Um, I don't know what could have fixed it. Better oversight of the budget, being more aggressive spending, down your funds, tracking your budget better. Um, just to name a few.
So, if transition, can I ask your phone?
Yeah.
If transition is the key source of problems?
Yeah.
Along with not being aggressive?
Yeah.
If, do you feel like we need to have somebody as your backup? Because we went a long time with no one in your position.
Yes.
And then by the time we put somebody in that position, we had already done a significant amount of budgeting by non-accounting people.
So, my first thing, my response to that is, um, I don't know where it would come out of the budget for an additional person at this time, just 'cause we're gonna be very close on salaries.
Yeah.
Um, my second response to that is I don't foresee myself going anywhere, so.
No, 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 the, the, the issue isn't where you go.
Yes.
But we wanna make sure that every single essential person has a transition plan. Like, we, we have an order of succession for the president.
Yeah.
Because the president is that important.
Exactly.
We need an order of succession for Chris.
Yeah.
'Cause Chris is that important.
Yeah. Um, I guess that would be up to the school committee, I, I don't really.
What would you recommend us to do?
I don't feel like I need somebody right now.
Okay.
So.
Come back up here, you have the worst poker face. I sent you an email telling you you have the worst poker face. Then come back up here.
I think that this is nothing about the position, but the more hands that you have ensuring that every grant is managed properly, every expenditure is being followed through on and everything's happening correctly, that there's those, time for those meetings with your building leaders, your principals of each building to go over what their budget is. I can't imagine how one person can do that.
Yeah.
And so, whether that's an assistant that's helping him process things and, and doing the vetting, I mean, I, I don't know what the, but I can't imagine, it's still early days yet.
Yes.
That you are going to have a lot of capacity, and I think probably the case is gonna be quite the opposite, that you're working well over forty hours a week routinely.
So, you think it would be a good idea to have?
I'm not saying a, a assistant school business manager, but some kind of support position at least that could, if he is out for anything longer than a week's vacation, um, can help.
That would be my recommendation, too. I think Chris is very earnest, I think he, I have a very strong suspicion he is already working over forty hours a week.
I don't wanna burn him out, like, I'm, I'm very cognizant of, I, I, we need to keep you fresh.
Yeah.
'Cause we're gonna need you to do this every year.
Yeah.
Um, I, I do wanna say that, I said last year, and I said in twenty-four, I've said at each budget thing that we have been doing, Wunderberg Schools has been doing a lot with very little for a very long amount of time. We have been running extremely lean, and things are gonna start breaking because we didn't have the budget to hire as many people as we wanted, and we had to make cuts, and central office was part of those cuts, and to me, this seems like a lot of it is a symptom, not that we have too much money, but that the people we have have been doing so much with so very little for such a long time, an extended amount of time.
I, I might come at this from a different perspective. I, I'm not saying that that's not true, but I think that there's another justification. Um, I'm on another board, and that board is, uh, they function as a critical role in, uh, I run the public defender board for the state, State of New Hampshire, and there was an audit that was done there, and they just have these done on a regular basis for public defenders across the country. And one of the things that they mentioned was, people in finance positions need to have backup for a whole host of reasons. If you have more than one set of eyes, it makes it twice as difficult for things to get missed. But, and this is not to say anything about Chris, I think Chris is doing a great job, but it also acts as fraud protection. So, regardless of our funding, regardless of our staffing, I think that we need to employ better practices when it comes to the business side of the school district. And I think that one of those things need, needs to be hiring someone, as the town manager said, to support Chris, because it's not, it's not that we think that you need help.
Yeah.
It is that your position is so critical.
Yeah.
That we cannot have any deduction of that office. I mean, it's like, you buy a surge protector for your TV, you are way more important than the TV.
Yeah.
We gotta have somebody that can help you at least manage the, the load. And I, it's like, just so you know, the crappy part of your job has not started yet. So, I, I think that, like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna tie this position to whether or not the people in town think that we have too much money or not enough money. I wanna tie it to sound business practices about, you know, continuous operation, fraud prevention, you know, fault detection, those kinds of things. you know, fault detection, those kinds of things, and say, this position is more important than, you know, it's not more important than the superintendent's job, and it's not more important than a frontline educator's job. But it is the thing that makes sure that the heartbeat of the district keeps pumping. And so I think that, you know, how we find the money is not as important as the fact that I think that we do need to, we do need to get you a support person. And, you know, we can have a conversation about what you, you want that support person to be like, but we gotta have a backup.
Yeah.
There's a vice president.
I know.
Even if they can't spell potato, there's still a vice president.
I should, I do wanna say there were other eyes on it too, because we do have.
I, that was.
Yeah.
My next question, then.
So how did the surplus of aid detection that we had, a business manager, the superintendent, TMS, our outside contractor doing accounting, and a town accountant all watching the money? I think that's the question we all want an answer to, and I don't have a great answer for that one, just 'cause I wasn't here. But I think what I would say is, just poor budgeting.
So I, I guess the thing that I'm trying to figure out is like, if, if I go to the bank and I see that they've like cashed my paycheck twice. I'm like, oh, hey, and like, that's not right.
Yeah.
This is, this is like more than a rounding error. So how does, and in particular, like, I understand what the issues were endemic to the district.
Yeah.
I think that Ezekiel has a lot on his plate. How did TMS miss it? Cause they were basically brought in just to do this.
So I think they might have been brought in too late, actually, cause I didn't start till July.
Okay.
And the fiscal year only ran till June thirtieth. Um, so at that point, it was just too late, really?
I think Tony's talking about TMS the first round.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, the first round, I, I don't know about the first round.
I mean, I think that fundamentally for me, the problem is that for a bunch of different fluky reasons, we had a lot of oversight.
Yeah.
And it still didn't get caught, and it makes no sense to me that, like, i- if you sit down and you do the same thing over and over again, you sort of develop like situational blindness, so I could understand how like, you know, the superintendent, the previous business manager, they just looked at the same charts over and over again. But TMS was supposed to have come in and been like, you know, we're starting with a clean slate, let's see what's going on here, and like, that just didn't work out.
Yeah.
And I don't understand how that could happen when it's this much money.
My assumption is that there was almost too much oversight. And TMS was being as tightly controlled as the budget.
Got it, got it, okay. All right, I mean, it's not a great answer, but that, that probably aligns with what I've experienced, all right.
So the next question is, is there any reason to believe that this was done intentionally? No, not to my knowledge.
There's no sense that anybody benefited from any of the money not being spent. There's no sense that the failure to spend money was done as an effort to sabotage the school district or damage the school district's credibility. There's no sense that this was done to support people who did not want the override to pass, there's nothing nefarious, it was just negligence.
Uh, yes, it was just negligence, I believe.
Okay. All right, I think I have one more question.
Yeah. Given how this money was found, do you have concerns about the current school year budget? Uh, I think I answered that earlier, so no, um, like I said, I did a full reconciliation of every single staff. And with the five hundred thousand that we got from the town, we should be on track to spending that out.
Did the reconciliation include grants?
Yes.
Okay, and, cause going forward, I think we should also be looking at, we, the school committee, we, grants were kind of a blind area.
Okay.
For us, we, I mean, we couldn't even see, revolving funds and grants were a blind area. And I think it, does that have part to do with what happened with this surplus?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Uh, because grants were kind of a, a black hole to us.
Grants and revolving accounts, we have put into place new, well, we resurrected some old, um, protocols that should have been done and prior, um, as far as preapproval, for things that are coming out of, um, the revolving accounts, the superintendent has to approve them. So when you see those things on a warrant, I already know about them. Where before we instituted this, there could be things on a warrant as we know the superintendent didn't know about. And so now Chris signs off on them, I sign off on them. And it's much easier for me when I'm doing final approval of requisitions to say, oh, I just signed that approval, I know what this is for, um, rather than me having to guess at that. And I think Chris is also monitoring our grants more closely, and you'll get more reports on that. We're still working on how we see our revolving funds in munis, um, that's something we're still working out with the town. So there's parts of munis that Chris can't access or doesn't have control over.
Are revolving, so Chris doesn't have control?
He does, uh.
No, I do.
You do now?
He does now.
Was that new? So last year?
I'm not sure what they had for permissions before I started.
Okay. Okay, yeah, cause revolving, revolving accounts and grants were, were a big black hole, which, um, I, I mean, I asked back in January twenty-four about it, and the answer was, we don't have access to that right now, we're working on it. So I'm very happy that Chris has access to that. And do we have a full, can we get at a future meeting a full account of which revolving funds exist? And roughly how much is in there at a staff moment in time, which I know is, just so we get an idea of the scale of them?
Yes, for, for sure.
Um, like I know athletics ebbs and flows dramatically.
Yeah.
I think Mandy's had questions?
She did.
Yeah, do you wanna go through Randy's questions?
Yeah.
We'll take questions from. I know.
Just a way.
I, I had a sense, uh, my goal is to get us out of here by nine thirty, that way it'll be two hours, I'm sorry, George, I'm really trying.
So her first question was, for FY twenty-five, could you identify the accounts that had significant budget surpluses? Could you also provide an estimate of how much of the underspending was due to unanticipated staff vacancies? Um, and like I said earlier, we reviewed the current budget report after most of FY twenty-five bills have been paid and purchase orders closed out. And, um, I did, I don't know if it's in my.
It's in the folder.
Yeah.
I organized it for you, thank you.
Oh, you did the percentage used?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we can see.
So I actually highlighted.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, the accounts where money was left on the table that I thought was significant.
Oh, that's amazing.
Can you explain the paraprofessional line?
So, yeah, sorry, does?
Sure, 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 so I'll go through and read them, there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. There were ten places, so the first one was, uh, the, the D O A schedule fourteen fifty, which is administrative technology, uh, and only ninety point one percent of that was used, so the, the, the amount that was left was, and tell me if this is wrong, I'm reading this correctly.
No, yeah.
Thirty thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Yeah.
So the next one was curriculum director, only ninety-two point three percent was used, that was thirty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars ninety-five cents.
Is that for the total curriculum office?
That's for the total curriculum office, yes.
Oh, my god.
The paraprofessional line is the big one, this is like, if you take out the, the buffer we normally have.
Yeah.
This is almost the size of the buffer we normally have, only eighty-seven point five percent was used, it was ninety-one thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-six cents. I believe, we talked about this last time, that was because they had applied for a grant, received the grant, but then didn't account for the reception of the grant.
Correct.
Right, you budgeted for those positions out of the general fund, um, and not out of the grant when they actually came out of the grant.
And it was, we did that initially because you don't wanna count on the grant for funding, but when we got the grant funding, we should have spent the money elsewhere to be all in a transfer.
When was the grant, or s- it's okay, I don't know.
Juliana, do you know when your IDA and grant, we knew what the numbers were?
For last year?
Yeah.
No, but it would have been about the same time, like the end of, cause I always get mine done like the week they come out, um. So it would have been like probably the beginning of September, end of Au- end of August. Cause last year, they weren't as picky with, with approving, they, they approved earlier, this year, they were much pickier, I had to go back three different times.
So we knew about that grant at the beginning of the school year? That's.
Pretty bad.
Then I had given, I had given names for that grant, with, with the costs, I have a lot of them.
I, I know it's.
No, we can see it accounted for in the IDA grant.
That's very frustrating, cause that wasn't known at the beginning of the year, that wasn't a sudden.
That's a bunch of money that we could have spent.
It's very frustrating, I'm, very frustrating.
And just so everybody picked up on this, my understanding is that you get your grants in almost immediately, every time. And so like.
I always send it out.
You knew, yeah, you got that money in.
I notify us, and I ICC Liz on everything, I, yeah.
Uh, the next one on here is other instructional materials, and it was sixty-seven point two percent, there was an excess of thirty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. Uh, there was, uh, another one on here, the custodial services line, we used eighty-three point four percent, we left one hundred and forty-one thou- uh, one hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents on the table. Uh, the heating of buildings, we used eighty point seven percent, we left twenty-five thousand sixty-two dollars and nineteen cents on the table. The maintenance of buildings, we used eighty-three point two percent, we left eighty thousand two hundred and seven dollars and fourteen cents on the table. The acquisition and improvement of equipment, we left four, uh, we used forty-nine percent, we left fifty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars twelve cents on the table. The replacement of equipment, we la- uh, we used ninety-three point five percent, that was, uh, twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and seven cents left on the table. Uh, collaborative tuition, we used forty-nine point six percent, twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars was left on the table. So really, we're looking at, uh, you know, the only one that impacted, uh, directly, the salaries of frontline educators is the paraprofessional line.
But we didn't make cuts as a result of that, we.
No, I know, I know, but what I'm saying is like, it is, it is not, like, I want all these to be zero. And the, the paraprofessional line is a huge, huge mistake. The rest of these are for things that are not frontline education, like, we obviously wanna keep our buildings in good shape.
Yeah, the maintenance one hurts.
Yeah, the custodial one is, is painful.
What didn't, was there maintenance, we wouldn't know, you weren't, was there maintenance that was deferred for cost savings?
Essentially, all we did was fix that elevator, apparently, I'm kidding, but like. Eat that elevator. Oh, gosh, I think it's.
It's still broken.
Is it still broken?
No.
No, we fixed it this year.
Oh, you didn't want to know.
I could not handle this, I could not handle this, it was still broken.
It's still, it's still terrifying, so.
Still there.
Oh.
So I guess it's important to note that, yeah, we did not make cuts as a result of this surplus. And this surplus would not have likely resulted, my parents saying, resulting in people the next year not losing their jobs or having to lay off.
We're still gonna make the cut.
So those cuts still have to be made?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make that really clear, because I think for me, as a parent, whose kids are in these schools, it's very hard to look at the cuts we made last year and then know that there was a surplus, but they're two disparate, unfortunately, things. But it was definitely frustrating, oh, especially that maintenance one that I made.
TJ, did that answer your question? I know no one likes that answer, but was that answer clear?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, same, I think we all have the same notes. Uh, TJ Loughlin, two oh seven, Rolling Acres Road, um, so I was, I was trying to keep track, I think everybody was with Penn, what you're saying. So paraprofessional, just to make sure I'm clear, line item was double budgeted, is that the way to understand that one?
So Juliana applied, applies for a grant. At the same time, we put it in our general budget, in case we don't get the grant. We got the grant, and then we never took it out, so it was double budgeted.
Right, so then some of these other ones, I guess, I guess the, the first question I have is, so what was the impact to our school system for not spending, you know, if we take out, you, I think, I think, uh, Chris, Mr. McNamara.
Yeah.
Said a hundred and thirty thousand?
That's about a hundred and thirty-one, but on the pair line, there was a hundred and ninety left, and that's because on other salary lines, where others were overspent. So there was about a hundred and thirty left on salaries, total salaries in the district.
So we overspent sixty somewhere?
Approximately.
Yeah, I see, so, so for the paraprofessionals, a hundred and ninety-one was double booked, which leaves about four hundred, four hundred thousand or so unspent in the school system.
Yes.
So what was the impact, you know, like if we talk, in the budget season, we talk in reverse.
Yeah.
Which is, we're in a deficit, we're gonna have an impact. Now, we didn't spend, so what was the impact?
And correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm just going based on what we've been talking about for the last three weeks.
Yeah.
And what this says. The major impact to the students is the paraprofessional line. I don't think that people outside the school.
But there should be any, any impact to that one, right?
No, 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 what I'm saying is like, if you're asking, how would the students have felt the difference?
Yes.
The paraprofessional thing would be, what, because we could have hired more, right? If we got the grant, we could have, we could have done more with that money someplace else.
Oh, so you're saying, if we did this again, we would double book and then just spend the money, I.
That's right, that's what we do all the time.
That's what we would do.
I would make a different recommendation to doing that because Juliana's, it's not Juliana's grant, because the IDEA grant is an entitlement grant. I would actually count on getting that money and not double book it. And this year, we took out, um, our pairs from the grant, so they'll have to be in the general fund.
There were concerns about it, yes.
Yeah, there's currently no pairs in.
But I, I think that TJ's question, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to do active listening, is not so much the budget practice. But if we had this hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-six cents in FY twenty-five, could we have used it elsewhere in providing support for frontline educators?
I, I was actually throwing you a bone, and you're taking the bone away.
I wanna, I wanna be as brutally transparent as possible.
I'm assuming we, we had no rights to that two hundred, that hundred and ninety K, like that's.
It's an entitlement grant.
I understand, but I'm saying, for the taxpayer's point of view, we should, we should decrease that from the operational budget to get the grant money. to get the grant money, or it's the same thing we do, we did with ARPA and everything. If you get the money, you give it back, so that you don't have the tax, that's a hundred and ninety K that we can give to other departments if we got grant money for it, instead of double booking it. So, I'm just even...
Which is what happened this year, unfortunately.
That is what's gonna happen this year.
That's what's gonna happen, right.
But I think at the same time, we are very leanly staffed, um, in the schools. And especially with the support staff and support for English language learners. That money last year, had we been forecasting appropriately or, and/or caught this error, that could have been used to hire late an English language learner teacher. It could have been, um, used to hire MTSF, multi-tiered systems of support. Um, there are a multitude of ways that we needed the money.
Yeah.
But because of the errors that occurred, we didn't know we had the money until we went to close out the year.
I, I understand. What I'm trying to say is, if you told the finance committee that our budget was double booking a line item, and then we were gonna pocket that money and spend it on the backend, they absolutely would say, no, I can predict that now.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So, uh, so let's take the paraprofessional line out, because the impact of that one, I think, is relatively, uh, just, just a pure mistake. Uh, but the other, so there's still four hundred K on the table. What's the impact of not spending that four hundred K?
I would say some of that impact is in things that schools have been requesting. For example, Mrs. Squire at the primary school has been requesting for several years, the touch view screens where teachers can manipulate things to better teach the online curriculum that we have now. I think we left a lot of money on curriculum side that could have been used for professional development for our teachers. We have a large disparity in our reading and math scores, they're not where I want them to be. And I think providing teachers robust opportunities for professional development would help with that. Um, so that could have accounted for some of the money. And again, I would recommend that we had looked at the positions that we really need filled based on the needs of the district.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm looking at some of these custodial services, a hundred and forty-three K. Like, what didn't we get from not having our buildings maintained?
Liz, can you confirm this statement for me? Um, part of the custodial line being so underspent was the lack of being able to fill positions?
Yes, correct.
And that happens...
All the time.
All the length of the time.
But what we typically do when we have unfilled positions is we take that money and patch it in someplace else. We don't just not spend it.
So, no budget is perfect, especially in a school system where we have different kids coming to us, and kids move in and kids move out, and we cannot, and kids grow and change, and we cannot predict absolutely perfectly every single cent that we're going to spend. And the idea is that we do as best a job we can, and we predict as best we can. And we ideally don't go over.
But I, I think, to be fair, we need central office, this administration, to do a better job than the previous administration in finding these unspent funds and applying them to different parts. Because this kind of transfer, as you can see, we do line item transfers every meeting, that's the way that you manage your money in, in a school district. You just keep shuffling it from one place to the other, and you can only do that effectively if you know how much you can shuffle.
So, I, I think, you know, I'm gonna say this reluctantly, I, I don't know if, if you know, my wife's a paraprofessional, so I definitely know the, the pressure and pain of not having more paraprofessionals, so. But, but I, I'm gonna say something that I, that I, I'm just curious how you guys approach this question, is, like, to me, when I see this, I don't see this as, oh, somebody wasn't looking at the charts. If there's a pain that we need to solve, we would be trying to solve it. Meaning, if there was a need that didn't get met, somebody would try to meet it, right? Like, if my bills aren't paid, I'm going to have to pay them. If my, my window's broken, I'm gonna have to go pay to have the window broken. What I hear is, we didn't have that type of need. Meaning, we were okay not spending the money because the needs were not in our face. Which means, maybe, that we have maybe a little fluff in the budget that we didn't spend.
I might disagree with you on that. Um, doing my entry work, I've, um, heard from many teachers that their needs were not listened to in the budget, um, formation, and the budget priorities that were put out by the, the last administration. It's almost a, it is a universal theme in what I'm hearing from teachers. They want a voice in what they need, and I think the needs were in our face. I think we were, I'm assuming, the prior administration was trying to be as austere as possible and said no to a lot of things that should have been yeses.
And, and I, I think, so, I'm, I'm not sure if anybody's aware, but prior to hiring Dr. Fortuna, Laura and I went and met like seven times with groups throughout the school district on a listening session to see what they would want in a new superintendent. And universally, the issue was, they were concerned about needs that were not being met. And like, one of the most basic needs, and this has been fixed, so it's no longer an issue, but the front door at Turkey Hill, if you hit it just the right way, and it wasn't with the sun on the door, so it had swollen, swollen up, you could pop that door open even when it was locked.
Would that have come out of one of the line items?
It was easily...
Eighty thousand dollars for maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance, maintenance of buildings. So, like, if you ask, were there needs not being met, the answer is yes. And the needs range from locking front doors at Turkey Hill all the way up to, you know, other things that involve frontline educators. And so, there were pain points, there are things that we need to fix. There are things that we need to fix in terms of student achievement gaps. There are things that we need to be mindful of in terms of building maintenance. And then there are other things like, uh, principal Squire's touchscreens that don't really fall into either of those things, but would help with implementing new curriculum. So, there are pain points. I could list off twenty of them, I've just listed off three. And we, we would have used this money, and it would have improved the health of the buildings, student achievement outcomes, and provided for, you know, staff. So, I, I don't think it's right to say that there are things that we had fluff in the budget. We had an administration that was focused on austerity and an administration that may not have been as cognizant of the needs of the people in the buildings as they should have been. And like, I can tell you, we heard in February, the doors don't actually lock here. We're depending on Alicia scaring the bejesus out of bad guys. That can't be our plan. Like, honestly, that cannot be the plan.
She's not very scary.
She's, you have not seen her when she's mad. She is really scary when she's mad. But, if, if, that can't be our plan. That is a clear, obvious need, it is non-fluff. I challenge anybody out there to tell me that it's fluff to have doors at schools that lock when the number one cause of death for kids under eighteen is shooting.
So, is it fair to say... That's, and that's why I asked you, because the challenge, is it fair to say that there was impact to the school system then by this spending not happening? And that, think, like, this, you name some sort of capital projects, even though they're not, I don't know, would that go through capital planning, I'm not sure, but these capital projects are re, are re, like, in backup now, this year, like, we're backed up in projects, we need to come back from it, and now we have this rock and effect, but what, I guess, is it fair to say that there was actual impact to the school system by not spending this money?
Yes, unquestionably.
Okay.
The austerity affected every aspect of every, I mean, I'm not a teacher, but I think if you asked the teachers, they would tell you, the austerity of last year affected everything. And it, yeah, it affected our students. I think the ultimate idea was to not overspend our budget because things were so, supposed to be so tight. And had they been spent appropriately, and the budgeting been accurate, it would have been tight if, if we had the chance to do what we want. And as far as your, you know, breaking a window analogy, it's like saying, you have a broken window, but we didn't have enough money to fix the window, so we put some duct tape on there and a little caution sign, and, you know, then you come back and go, well, see, you didn't need the new window anyways, the duct tape worked just fine, like, well, did it?
Well, I think, and that, and that's what I started my questions with, was where, where did we apply duct tape? That's what I meant by, what are the impacts of the schools, right? It's basically the list of the duct tape that we applied, because I think a lot of people in the community don't understand where we applied duct tape. It's just assumed four hundred thousand, we'll call six hundred thousand, but six hundred thousand in duct tape is a lot, right? So, like, to list all those places of duct tape is effectively how you convince the community you needed the money, instead of just assuming there was impact, roughly speaking, right? And I, and I'm done with my questions, I'm just, I'm just kinda closing.
Like, the, like, the super easy example would be, and I know that there are issues with the buses and what kind of buses, but the projected cost for buying vans or buses for athletic transportation, which was this exorbitant, uncontrolled cost over the last two years, was about the amount of the surplus. And if we had been aware of that surplus, and we could make the buses work, we could have used the surplus to get those vans and stem, stamp the bleeding out in terms of the athletic costs for transportation. That's like a very simple, it's almost exactly the right amount of money. You know, like, we had looked at two or three vans, they were two hundred thousand dollars apiece. That gets you right where we're at.
I, I think there's a very big difference between noticing you have a surplus and wanting to spend it. And, and having it appropriately in the budget, right? And actually, this came up, this came up during, during the FY twenty-five budget season with the ARPA money. I think Mr. Beardmore said, if we had the extra money, we would spend it. I think he said that probably ten times. Um, not, not this surplus, but additional surplus from the ARPA money, we would spend it. And the community's general sense was, don't do that. So, I, I, I understand the idea of, we could have hired a ton of paraprofessionals. We could have done all these things if we noticed the surplus, that's a reactive response. What I'm trying to say is, if, if, let's say you did that, let's say you waited until March, and then you said, oh, we had this money and we could have spent it. Well, what are the other things you didn't pay for that you asked the community you needed the money to pay for?
I mean, some of those things are as simple as like what Liz had said about the fact that we had unfilled custodial positions. We were never going to change the fact that those positions went unfilled. So, spending that money didn't alter what the school looked like, it just allocated that money to a different need. If the custodians' positions would have been filled, the schools would have been cleaner and better maintained. But they were not filled, and so we had that money. The job of the, the last administration and of every administration is to make sure that the dollars we get are used effectively, and that, and we did not do that. And so, like, your point is well taken, that like, what did we suffer? And the custodial example is a good one, because if you look at it from an outsider's perspective, you say, well, like, you know, you didn't lose anything, cause you were never gonna be able to hire those people anyway. And that is true, but only insofar as we never reallocate the money. But as everybody that watches school committee meetings can see, we reallocate money every single meeting, because we have to do that to make the budget work. So, yes, we would have never gotten the buildings any cleaner than we did before because we were not gonna fill those positions. And seeing the money in March would not have somehow retroactively gotten back and made the buildings cleaner in November. But responsible budgeting requires us to be mindful of those gaps and put the money where we could use it better. So, like, maybe we, maybe we take the money unspent on custodians and get one of the, the two or three buses for athletic transportation. And then we save money down the line by not having to pay DBUS, and we can allocate that money differently. So, I, I think that ultimately, there are two different answers to your question. The first is, there were pain points, things that need to be fixed, and they were, and I think Chris highlighted this, there was a, a, perhaps a little bit too much caution in, with the budget, and we should have been more aggressive in patching those holes. And then, the second thing is, we have to be mindful and consistent in reallocating funds as new needs arise. It's not just, oh, we didn't spend that money, right? Like, we can't save money. By law, the school district cannot have a savings account where we just stash extra money. It remits to the town if we don't use it. I think, we talked about this last time, and correct me if you think it's no longer true, but we were operating on too big of a cushion. We can't have a budget that's perfect, because we don't know who's gonna get, you know, sick, and who's gonna retire, or who's gonna not show up, and we need to replace that position. So, we're gonna always have a little bit of a buffer. We were running too big a buffer over the last couple of years. I think when Chris went down through the numbers, there were a couple of years where it's over two hundred thousand dollars. And I think that's probably more, more of a buffer than we needed. But it's clear that seven hundred thousand dollars is abnormally high, and we should have been more mindful, and we should have allocated that money differently.
Okay, thank you.
And just so everyone's aware, the Turkey Hill door is repaired now.
The Turkey Hill door actually works, the lock is fixed.
Multiple doors were replaced, uh, as part of a capital plan. Yep, as part of a capital plan. Just don't wanna like panic people.
Is there anything else in Mandy's questions that hasn't been addressed? I just wanna make sure, if we can get out of here, I'd like to try to get us out of here.
Are you down with Tom?
No, there's multiple...
Oh, sure, oh, sure, sure, sure.
There's other people with questions.
I just, I, I was really here just to listen, but I heard something repeated, uh, tonight that I have heard at my select board meeting, so I wanted to publicly go on record about that one point. I think based on most of what I've heard from Chris and the superintendent tonight, I'd like to have some private conversations over there, so, but just tonight, I wanna clarify one thing. It is not the responsibility of the finance director whatsoever in regards to this surplus. Not whatsoever. The school is responsible for the school budget until the end. It is not the responsibility of the finance director to oversee these expenses. And that's all I wanna say at that.
Thank you.
Laura Burison, three D nine, Malthus Road. I'm gonna take my musicators hat off, so I'm, as a mom, as a resident, as a CPA. Thank you for so much discussion about budgets and numbers and things like that, okay? I don't think I've done that much at work lately. Um, I just wanna say, it's, it's exceedingly disappointing. Um, I also want to just officially say, I asked three times last year, made three separate requests for budget to actual numbers. Three separate requests and never received them. I looked on the website, I asked twice at meetings, to point me to where on the website are these reports. I'd like to request that this committee consider having a standing agenda item to review budget to actual, cause the only way you're not gonna get there is that if you are looking at this on a systematic basis with real information, it is looking at what are our actuals and what did we budget. That's how you catch these things early, you don't wait until the end of the year. But looking at those things and making those things public, is being able to see where they are. Um, yeah, I had, I, like I said, I said a couple of times, and I got a somewhat smaller answer, was, well, we're working on it. It's in process, it's a little difficult. I get it, I do this all day, every day, I get it, but it's not impossible. You know, so I think those are, you know, a couple of things that would help. Um, I think it was just, there was a lot going on, I'll give the benefit of the doubt on some, I think there was just, I got off the ball.
I believe the FY twenty-five numbers are, that we went over tonight, are posted.
I know, yeah, so, yeah, I think it was during the year, trying to get that information was not, and it wasn't just, it was a few requests, like I said. Um, like I said, I think it's, um, you know, it, it's unfortunate, I think these, the, the, you know, we take that, what did we budget before, and what are we doing now? These, you know, what happened, definitely has an impact on going forward. I mean, we almost... I mean, we almost lost our fifth grade band. We had the kids, I'm happy to make the donation, I'm happy that our kids did that and are able to make a donation to the music programs. But the music budget, I mean, all the expense line ends got cut. And not partially, they got cut. So the teachers are making do and paying for things personally that isn't, I agree, probably isn't, wasn't being heard. So getting things restored when they get cut is nearly impossible. So I think looking at kind of what we have now, keeping an eye on where are those funds, letting folks, maybe letting teachers know saying, hey, we do have a little bit of extra wiggle room. Does somebody have a need, is there a rainy day list? Uh, could we have taken twenty grand and paid for the water heater that I just heard about, you know, sitting here? I mean, that's, those are the kinds of things, getting ahead of those things. So where's the rainy day list, where's the wish list? If we had a few extra dollars, I have no doubt there are things that all of our schools could use that will impact our teachers, our students directly or indirectly. I think we need to keep a close eye on those things.
So can I just reflect your comments?
Please.
Number one, I'm sure that if you ask Dr. Fortuna, every email I send about this budget and about other budget issues, I reference one group of kids as being emblematic of the people that worked the most and took the biggest hit. It's always the music kids.
I appreciate that.
They come every time, they speak with great passion and they are very articulate and they work their butts off. So all of these budget mistakes, I'm thinking about that second grader who is on the cusp of being a good reader or not. I think about the music kids that I saw sweating in August. Those are the things that bother me the most and like, I'm disappointed that, you know, the building wasn't as maintained. But at the end of the day, the, the school is not a building, it's the kids. And so I, I completely agree with you.
Thank you.
The second point you have about the teachers' wish list, so you are aware tomorrow. And then next week, Dr. Fortuna, Mr. McNamara and myself are having a meeting with all staff. We're going to meet with the middle high school and we'll talk about this issue again tomorrow at three o'clock. And we'll answer all the questions we can and we're going to keep an eye on that. And we're going to do it again the week after down to primary school, so we're, we're doing those things. In terms of the, the budget to actual, that is one of the things that Chris is going to implement and we're going to make it work.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate Dr. Fortuna to the get to know you sessions. It was great to have those, to be able to sit down. I think that open door, the listening is really going to go a long way of making sure. People will understand when we need to tighten the belt.
Yeah.
If there's that communication, we feel at least a bit heard, so I think that's really great.
We've also built into our budget timeline forums with teachers so that we're hearing directly from them what they need. Because right now we have a very demoralized teaching staff that it, all of the years of austerity has really impacted. We've lost many good teachers, some great teachers, because they're afraid their jobs are going to go away and that there's not stability here. And so we need to become more predictable and more transparent. And this administration and this school committee are committed to doing that.
I appreciate that too, because I think that came up at town meeting day too, where they say, well, we'll figure it out by November or December. I'm like, teachers start in September. And not that that has an impact on them and their lives, but also bring a new teacher in mid-year or things like that. So it's just having a much longer look and keeping an eye on these things is really much appreciated again as a mom and as a resident, so, yeah, thank you.
The music kids are always.
And they're great, I know you guys are great. It's all of them, it's drama, it's athletics, it's all of them, there's so many, all right.
But the music kids show up every time.
They show up all the time.
Peter Beardmore, two eighty-two Pleasant Street. First of all, just let me say, I'm very troubled by this as a former school committee member. And specifically to the issues that you've raised about the staff, Dr. Fortuna, and I, I think about what this has potentially done to our credibility as we go forward and try to get this thing properly funded, it, it's very troubling. My first question is really for, for Tony and Laura. Were you aware of this double budgeting issue with respect to the, to the, to the grant, the idea, idea grant in particular? Because I was not.
No.
And I, I got to tell you, I mean, I've got hundreds of hours in these two budgets and I was not aware of this, so.
The, the, as Laura said earlier, the grants and the revolving accounts are these black boxes and we've got to stop that practice.
Um, and that's part of what troubles me so much is that I didn't catch it. And, and, and somebody suggested online this week that it was suggested that they were aware of it. And how I missed it, you know, like, I just don't know. Let me, I understand your point about the perfect storm and people leaving and moving of the offices and all that. Like, that was my first thought when I became aware of this a couple of weeks ago was, we put way too much on our people, particularly in the months of May and June as this was all happening and you're doing end of year budget drain. And then somebody in sales and marketing, like, I live on end of year budget drain, right? Like, I know how this works. But I recall a school committee meeting, I want to say in March or April of last year, where we transferred over a hundred thousand dollars from what were basically supply lines to the athletic revolving fund because of, and I, I don't want to belabor the issue around the athletic revolving fund, but we drained supply lines. And I made the point at the time, like, we had purposely funded those lines as part of the override case and it really troubled me that we were doing that, but I understood why. But now I hear tonight thirty K administrative technology, nine, thirty-nine K under other instructional materials, eighty K building maintenance, twenty-nine K, you know, replacement of equipment. There was another number around acquisition of equipment. And I, I think to myself, at the time of that, at the time of that budget transfer, the, the tone at the time was that we were cutting this thing really close. And we were in Q four at the time. So clearly there was a, a misunderstanding amongst the people who were managing the budget between what they understood to be true and reality as we were projecting into the, into the end of the year. I believe, as I said two weeks ago, that a big part of that problem is the lag that occurs with respect to Munis, right? So we're processing POs, like, what, what, what? We were being told in the reports that we were seeing that were originating from Munis and then additional information was being added to it to try to, to, to try to show us what we should have believed was reality or what we believed was reality. There was a time lag issue there. And so my, my question is, are we at a point where our electronic accounting systems reflect something that is near reality today?
I think our better monitoring of it is what is helping us. The lag we're really, we're working on, but we also need to not be closing out POs. And what month is this, September? We, we need to be closing out POs throughout the year to find the extra funds. So I don't think in totality this can be based on the posting of those funds. We should be able to know what we're spending. We should know the balance in our checkbook regardless of what the accounting software is saying. We should know that.
So I agree you should know regardless of what the accounting software sets, right? And, and I understand that there's a process of connecting the dots between what the software says and what you know. And I think that there's largely a process thing there, I totally get it. But there has to be a process with the accounting system, with the people at town hall that are running this thing, that is something close to current. And, and I guess that's my question, right? Like, I understand how you paper the, the gap. That's how, that's happened for a long time and I hope you can do it better. But there has to be, there has to be a mechanism with the actual software, with how these things are getting paid, that is something close to current. And, and that's what I don't think I have a clear answer on. Like, I, I've been told anecdotally that the move from Munis to the SaaS version of Munis and getting past these upgrades and all, like, it's better than it was. But I don't know what, you know, I don't know what better means, right? Other than, I was told for the last three years as a school committee member that it was broken. Like, that's, that's like literally the level of color, the color that I had.
So like, I, I guess one of the things that I want to follow up on Peter's saying is like, we've been told that this Munis version is better, but it's like, there's a smartest Kardashian, that doesn't make them smart. Are we, are we dealing with that? Like, is Munis a substantial problem? Because I've never heard somebody be like, I love Tyler software's Munis.
No, so in my career I've used multiple accounting systems. I would say Munis is probably up towards the top of them. I've used QuickBooks, I use a large banking software called Epicor. I've used another software called Grant Management Systems, which is much smaller than Tyler Technologies' Munis. And Munis has a lot of functionalities that other providers just don't have.
And, and let me just offer one additional bit of color. When I refer to Munis, I'm really referring to our instance of Munis first. There's additional color, right? In addition to all the challenges that we've had over the years, just three weeks ago in the Lunenburg Ledger, there was an issue with the water department around the billing challenges that they continue to have, right? With respect, uh, sewer department, excuse me. So like, there's anecdotal informa-, information out there that there are challenges with the software. And the software is the software is the software, there are always going to be challenges with the software. My question is really like how we're implementing the thing, right? Like, how we are doing the thing such that when you are reporting numbers to the school committee, there's a high degree of probability that those numbers are current. And, and, and that's really the essence of my question.
Chris, can you explain how you've been working with the town accountant to increase the Munis functionality to what you need it to be?
Yeah, so we've been working together just to get permissions to run salary projections for all the employees. And they've given me access to whatever, whatever I've asked for so far. They've been very receptive. And I think to know when you run a report the day of the meeting, it should be accurate, to my knowledge. It should be, it should be accurate to the numbers in Munis, the numbers should be accurate.
Okay.
Accurate to things that we've been?
To, to the, to the total expenditures and encumbrances.
Okay. Do you, was it last year's version? Because I'm looking, we've got quarterly budget reports last year. And this was not reflected in the quarterly budget reports. And in fact, some of the numbers I'm seeing in our quarterly budget reports are different than that year-end one we just reviewed with you. I need to go back and reconcile, but it was from March, so it hadn't been fully expended. But that ideally, the quarterly budget reports should have caught some of this, not, not the grant issue. So when you, when we do a purchase order, we, we make a purchase and we haven't paid the bill yet, is that reflected in Munis? Because I, some of the backlog and the pressure of May and June.
Can you just repeat that one more time?
Well, if you were to run a report for us and we were to say, how much have we expended in this category?
Yes.
Would that reflect something that had been ordered and delivered, but we had not yet paid the bill?
So the funds will be still encumbered.
Okay, so Munis will reflect what's been encumbered?
Yes.
Was it last, was it doing it that last year?
It should have been.
Yes, okay. Because we have been told part of it, there had been issues with how long it took for stuff to get paid, but that never made sense to me because like Dr. Fortuna said, I, I literally have used the balance in your checkbook.
Yeah.
You shouldn't need to wait for the check to clear to know you spent the money.
I, I, again, I, you know, a little bit of history here. Two years ago, when we had the consultants in, we definitely had a problem with encumbrances. Like, that was, that was an articulated issue that they brought up, like, we don't have encumbrances, we can't see anything. We can basically see what's been paid and what hasn't.
Which is not the way to do accounting.
Which everybody acknowledged that was a problem, right? And as we got into last year, into the current calendar year, we were told that that was less and less and less of an issue, right? Like, it's, it's large, the, the, the indication was, was that those issues had been solved, right? And, and that, that's really the essence of my question, right? Because the, the, the thing that I can't resolve in my head is that we were doing transfers in March and April that reflected a very narrow landing on this thing, right? But where we landed was a very wide gap. And so it just, I can't, I can't resolve that in my head.
It's all yours, it's all yours.
That, that is the, that is the essence, welcome to, ten o'clock on a Wednesday night, that's what happens. That, that's what I just can't resolve.
If I could just say something, I think part of this was, there was very centralized controls. I also think that there was a determination to work through performance issues. And I feel like Reagan talking to the Soviets now, but we're going to have to, it's trust but verify from here on in. And I think that we need to be ruthless about demanding competence, accountability from every single person that spends a taxpayer dime. And that's what we just, I mean, that's what we're all committed to doing. And if that means that, you know, sacred cows get skewered, then too bad. Because we cannot do this again. I do not want to be here next year thinking about apologizing to a second grader or seeing the band kids sweating in August to collect money from the town. Like, we're, this is, this is absolutely insane.
I also just want to make one last point. And it's the same point I made two weeks ago. We've got to execute on the current year budget, right? To the best that we can, it has to, it has to execute on the intention, on the intent of the school committee, the current school committee, the previous school committee that passed the budget. The custodial services line is a perfect example, right? If, if we have unspent funds because we have, we are understaffed in custodial staff, we need to bring in contractors to sweep the floors, right? And, and this building is notoriously dirty and, and it's a, you know, effectively a brand new building. And those, that's the kind of, of management that I hope we can, we can, you know, affect in the, in the coming months and years.
Ruthlessly demand competence.
Thank you.
Are there any questions online?
No, I didn't see any.
Is anybody awake online? All right. I think, I think that, uh, given how long this has gone, I, I'd ask if we could shelve the school committee goals and subcommittee reports and just move it on and adjourn the meeting. Is there anybody that has any objection?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right. I don't know if there's any public comment, if anybody wants to vote dominant about anything else we talked about. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, uh, it is ten oh one. I would look for a motion to adjourn now.
A motion to adjourn.
Anybody else?
You guys say second.
All in favor?
Yes.